And begin.
I would like to call the meeting of the Scott WMO Watershed Planning Commission on August 22nd at 4:15 PM to begin the meeting at this point. And the, is there an act, uh, motion to move forward? Do we need a motion?
Commissioners, I'll make a motion to go ahead and start the meeting.
Okay. Do we need to take a roll call vote on that?
Yep, I need a second.
Okay, is there a second?
Commissioner Veerling, I'll second that.
All right, roll call vote.
Um, thank you Commissioners. Uh, Commissioner Weaver?
She's traveling, so she may not be able to respond.
Commissioner Pitts?
Aye.
Commissioner Casillas?
Aye.
Commissioner Veerling?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
Commissioner Shea?
Aye.
And do we have Commissioner Phil?
Aye.
Thanks Commissioners.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and the meeting minutes for our July 25th minutes. So let's start with first the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections or changes to the proposed agenda for today's meeting? Hearing none, then have everybody had a chance to look at the meeting minutes from the July 25th meeting? And if so, are there any additions or corrections or clarification that you would like for the minutes from our last meeting? And hearing none, I'd be open to a motion to approve both the agenda and the minutes as presented to us.
Commissioner Shea, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
This is Commissioner Casillas, I'll second that motion.
Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Pitts?
Aye.
Commissioner Casillas?
Aye.
Commissioner Veerling?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
Commissioner Shea?
Aye.
And Commissioner Phil?
Epstein.
Thank you Commissioners.
All right, knowing that's approved, we'll continue then with the staff reports. Let's start with the Scott SWCD. Troy, are you available to give us an update?
Yes, I am.
Great.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we're here you, loud and clear.
Very good. Thank you. Good afternoon Commissioners. Um, I'll just read some highlights from the report that you find in your packets. Starting with our technical assistance and cost share, the graph before you shows a number of requests where we have active. Um, in August, we're right around that 200 mark of active, of requests for conservation assistance. And about 125 of those, a good percentage are actual projects that are in various stages of development, planning, implementation. So even though our numbers are, are down this month, um, the proportion of projects goes relatively high compared to historical average. Uh, soil health and cover crop, we continue our long-term initiative to promote those practices. We took, uh, photos at comparison sites. Uh, Mike Seifert and Jerry Roach both have, uh, of test plots. And, um, and so what we do with that data is we compare these test plots of the, over time. So we take photos to promote cover crops. We use the data to provide information to landowners who are interested, or producers who are interested in, in, uh, potentially adding cover crops to their programs. Uh, we also continue our preparations for our cover crop aerial seeding. We've done that for the past couple of years. We get several hundred acres. Uh, we coordinate the, all the seed purchase and the aerial seeding of those, including securing the pilot and the plane and the date. So, um, we're getting that time of year. I'd say within a couple of weeks, they'll be flying on the cover crops. Clean water education program, we hosted a, a mid-year partnership meeting with SQUEP. This was one of the ideas that Vanessa brought forward that we should probably meet earlier in the year to help plan for the following year. And, uh, that would play into the budgeting so that we're actually, um, budgeting for the types of priorities and programs we want to do versus being reactionary after the year begins. Uh, we began communication with Outdoor Ed Day volunteers. Uh, Outdoor Ed Day is a four-day-long event. It will be the last week in September. Anybody who's interested, uh, in coming out and watching, um, what we do and, and being part of the 12 to 1300 students that go through the program every year are welcome to come. Uh, we, that's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. I think that's the 22nd or, no, what's it, 23rd? Let me check my calendar just to make sure here.
Cover's like the week of the 28th.
Where's, is our calendar here? 26th is the Monday. 26, 27, 29. We're out there from about 9:30, 10 o'clock until about 1:30, uh, each of those days. Uh, we selected KC Acres as our 2022 Scott County Conservation of the Leader. One of the primary things, uh, the KC Acres farm does is, is cover crops. They do cover crops on about just every acre they, they could possibly do, and they're just leaders in that, that area. Um, let's see, moving on down to, let's say, uh, I'll skip down to buffer loss. So we've begun our compliance inspections for 2022. Uh, we do compliance inspections on a rotating basis every three years. So we split the county into three zones. The first zone, uh, or the zone one, or the area one that we're doing this year is the, the northern tier of the, the county. Uh, water quality, surface water for the WMO, we're doing our regular routine sampling out at Brewery Creek. Um, and we also assisted, uh, Melissa with lake vegetation survey in Cedar Lake. The participation graph there shows you where we're standing, uh, here in this past month of June. You can see it wasn't quite as bad as, as June, but the July, we're still probably around half. At least we were about half the precipitation that we'd expect normally, uh, at the Jordan Field Office. Construction erosion control, uh, this includes both the county as well as the city of Credit River. So those numbers are combined. So you're seeing with the bar chart, a little over 200 inspections were performed in the month of July and about 30 plan reviews as represented by the purple, uh, line bar there, or the line. Well and Conservation Act, uh, we still have a, a pretty steady influx of projects, uh, to review or applications for review. Typically, we see a lull this time of year, but, uh, this year, the, um, the number of applications that we've seen is later than we normally would in a, a normal year. Uh, but, um, fairly steady workload on that. The Clean and Wetland Bank is doing well. Uh, we had a, a, um, a, um, non-native invasive species survey done, which we do, uh, in late spring, early summer every year. Uh, we got the results of those and, and from that, we knew we needed to get out there and do some maintenance. Uh, the biggest pressure we're having is from thistle, so we did a lot of spot mowing out there. But otherwise, we have very good diversity. The, the hydrology of the site is where it needs to be. And the diversity and, um, density of native plants is, is doing very well despite the, uh, pressure from some non-native species. Equipment rental program, I'll skip down to the graph there. You can see we have about 1,200 to 1,300 acres under our belt so far this year. Uh, the, the equipment is out there as we speak and will probably be out there, uh, till November sometime, if not even later. Um, so there's a large demand and you can see from 2021, uh, we had a banner year that year and, and we're on pace to get at least close to that this year as well. The cost share grant status, so the numbers here intended to give you a snapshot of where we're sitting in total with the amount of available cost share dollars that, um, for projects. The Soil and Water has about $287,000 and the WMO has 380,000, 381,000 for a total of nearly $670,000 in available cost share. And the chart there is a little complex, but it shows you all the various grants that we do have available. The light part is what has been encumbered and the dark part is what's still available. In the month of August, um, the graph, the table here shows the payments that were certified board. So we had roughly eight or nine projects totaling over $27,800 worth of payments. These would have all been made in the prior month of July. And the board approved three new cost share applications, or two new applications and one make a recommendation which this board will consider here, um, today, totaling $11,308. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'll try to answer any questions if there are.
Thank you Troy, you did an excellent job there. Appreciate it very much, your time this, this afternoon. Does any of the members have any questions or want any clarification from Troy at this time? If not, then I think we can move right on to Vanessa.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Uh, we have just a kind of a few ongoing updates, uh, for, um, water resources and natural resources. Um, if you haven't had a chance to take a look at our website recently, we have been working on providing lake pages on our website for each of our lakes as kind of a hub for residents within the county to go to for, uh, getting more information about the lake, uh, to get studies that we've had done on the lake, to get water quality reports on the lakes. So we've talked, we talked about this last year and this is one of our priority projects for this year to help, um, just kind of create a better education and outreach resource and tools for our residents. Uh, we obviously get a lot of these calls and emails throughout the year and we're always happy to field them. But, um, from a lake perspective, it's always good to have kind of a hub tool for our residents. So, uh, I do encourage everybody to take a look. Um, it is primarily the lakes that we manage here within the SWOMO. So we don't currently anticipate planning for, uh, let's say like Prior Lake or Spring Lake because those watershed areas do have their own lake information. But for lakes like, you know, O'Dowd and Cedar, uh, we are looking at, um, and working on all of those lake pages. So please take a look at those and we will continue to add information to those as we get them. If you have any suggestions for information you'd like to see on those lakes, uh, on those pages, please send us an email and we'll happily, uh, look at adding that. But again, it's a tool and a resource for our residents to use. Um, in addition to that, the county is actually working on a couple of really large internal projects. One of them is updating their, um, it's their ERP system. So it's the system that we, um, put all of our grant information in and our timesheet data in. And it's the employee resource platform. And so there've been a, a lot of kind of meetings and, um, gatherings of different county staff to try to help, uh, develop and improve processes for how we just do the day-to-day business and creating a new platform that is more efficient for the county in delivering those services. Uh, so we've been very actively participating, uh, in those activities as well. They're not going to probably launch the new ERP for a couple of years. Uh, it's not something the residents will see, uh, but it really impacts how we do our business on a day-to-day basis. So, um, that's been definitely a, a big lift and it's very, it's a very exciting project. So, um, in addition to that, uh, I know up on the agenda today is our preliminary 2023 proposed levy. Um, the board this year has also, uh, created a new initiative and that is to do board workshops, board budget workshops for each of the accounting units. Um, to give each accounting unit a little bit of special one-on-one time with the board in kind of a workshop setting to talk about our activities and our budget and how we're doing and help give them, you know, more information on each of those. Now, we obviously already do this, um, for the, the WMO and that's specifically because we are a special taxing district and because the WMO is required under statute to do this as well. So, uh, it's actually a very easy thing for us to add. Um, and it's just another opportunity for us to, uh, get in front of the board and, and talk about all the great things that we get to do. Uh, but that is actually coming up here in, on September 6th. So, uh, in our budget process, there's actually now a new little step that I'll kind of go over when I talk about the budget. Uh, but we have been working on, there's a little report for that. And, uh, we have been working on that as well and we can certainly share it with the WPC once we've, uh, gone to board with it. Um, in addition to that, uh, Met Council did reach out a month or two ago uh, to ask if I would be willing to help represent Minnesota as a delegate at the US Water Alliance this year. Uh, the summit is in Milwaukee. Uh, because I sit on the Met Council's 2050 Planning Steering Committee, uh, I think they thought that was a good alignment of, of input. So, uh, I will be attending that, uh, coming here in September. I have never actually attended the US Water Alliance Summit, so I'll have to provide you some big feedback as to, uh, what we were able to accomplish and how we were able to represent both the WMO and the county. Uh, but I'm definitely looking forward to that, uh, with Met Council. Uh, in addition to that, the, um, watershed management study that we're working on with Prior Lake, Spring Lake Watershed District and the Soil and Water Conservation District has been moving along. We did have our last TAC meeting with our, our technical representatives and we've take, we have their recommendations now and we're going to go to the steering committee for that group here uh, in a few weeks to bring to them our recommendations and our information that we have collected, um, about just the different opportunities for, uh, collaboration, uh, different ways we could possibly improve service delivery, um, our analysis of different ways to align potential watershed management within the county. Uh, so this is kind of a, a big lift that we are now kind of bringing forward to the next step. Uh, and then obviously, once we've heard from the steering committee and the boards, uh, we'll also share that information with the WPC. But I wanted to always provide you guys an update with where we are in that process because you don't see a lot of it, but it does take a fair amount of staff time and we do work hard on it with our partners. Um, like Troy, who's always there and working hard and does a great job. So, so, um, that's, uh, that's kind of one or another big list that we're doing that you might not see a lot, but it does have a potential impact. Um, in addition to that, um, we are also, uh, helping to support the Metro Children's Water Festival, which we have done more in years past. Obviously with COVID, it, it, uh, kind of took a backseat for a while, but, um, all, all seven counties in the metro, uh, basically help steer the Children's Water Festival and that's actually at the state fairgrounds every year. And so, uh, staff will be there on September 28th, helping to volunteer and promote the kind of work that we do and help educate our youngest future leaders. So those are kind of my big updates. Um, I'd also invite any of our partners here. I know we have, uh, both Lisa Quinn from, uh, Spring Lake Township. And I know we have Bruce Looney here from Prior Lake, Spring Lake Watershed District. Uh, if you folks had any updates or information you'd want to share with us, we'd certainly love to hear it.
Uh, this is Lisa Quinn from Spring Lake Township. I'm just here to, you know, just keep, just to keep apprised of what's new in the watershed area and, um, specifically find out, you know, or not find out, but you know, keep in touch with what's happening at.
Great. Thanks Lisa. Bruce, did you have any great updates about the Watershed District?
Um, well, we had a meeting last Thursday and, um, and basically, uh, we're going over budget. That's a big issue right now and some of our projects, uh, we lost one staff member who decided to go a different direction. So we're kind of, we're down two people in our, in our staffing. That's a concern. And, um, we did attend, um, uh, myself and Christian Morganberger attend the one watershed, one planned open house. And, uh, that was interesting to see how that process is, uh, moving forward or how it's working. And, um, other than that, we are basically trying to get some projects going and running into right-of-way acquisition issues. So that's, that is where we're at right now on some of our projects. But, um, and then one other item, we did have a really good farmer-led council meeting, uh, with Troy and Soil and Water Conservation District. So that was good and we're moving that forward too.
Well, thank you so much for the updates Bruce. I really appreciate that. Sounds like, you know, I talk to Joni obviously on a pretty regular basis, so it's nice to hear though, um, for the Commissioners, all the great work that you guys do. So, thank you. Uh, um, at this point, I stand for any questions. And then obviously, if the Commissioners had any questions for our partners, we could bring those up right now as well.
Commissioners, do you have any questions if you'd like to address to Vanessa? I've got, I've got a couple. This is Virgil. Uh, while you think, if, if you have any other question, I have two comments, first of all. First of all, I'm looking at the website right now and you mentioned the, uh, the web, the lake pages, which are very interesting. The Cedar Lake one right now is a very good graphic because it shows that the chlorophyll and the phosphorus is going down. The water's getting a little cleaner and, and more clarity. So it's a very good, uh, resource to point people to as they're wondering what we're doing out there in Cedar Lake. So I'd recommend all the Commissioners to take a look at that website. It's very good. And the other comment that I'd make is Vanessa, congratulations to you on being, uh, invited to the national meeting. Uh, we're looking forward to, uh, upon your return, maybe a report and a summary back to us as to, you know, what, what your thoughts were. So I appreciate you put that on the agenda.
Absolutely, I will.
Any other questions or comments for Vanessa? If not, we thank you very much and we're going to move on to, uh, ongoing business, project updates by Ryan.
Chair, Commissioners, good evening or good afternoon. Uh, just a few updates, uh, I have for you today. Uh, one, we continue to work on our contracts. So we've got our two CIPs that we've identified and are pursuing for, um, design work at this time and then construction at a later date. Uh, so the contracts that we are working on right now are with the design consultants. So one is Interflueg and one is SRF. We've talked about this before. It does take a little bit of time to, uh, to get these processed. So it's kind of critical to get the timeline started, excuse me, as soon as possible uh, because we have somewhat of a narrow window. Uh, we don't get to control the weather and these sites need to be surveyed before the design work can start. And you typically want leaf off, uh, but also not snow cover. So there's a, a window in there, um, where we're trying to hit that and hopefully it all works out. And, uh, you know, as we get closer to kind of that leaf off date, uh, we'll see where the contracts are at and if, um, if we need to kind of expedite them a bit. Uh, we also have another contract in the works. Uh, we're working with the city of Credit River and the city of Prior Lake on the Markley Lake, um, study. Um, and so that's dealing with kind of water levels and, you know, what, what are some alternatives that could be looked at on that particular lake? So once again, contract, I'm trying to get that, uh, going. Um, so we're going back and forth with AD2S is the, uh, the company that we'll be contracting with. They were the low bid that hit all our qualifications that we're looking for in the RFP process. Um, next item, so we have been working with Bowser and also MPCA. We do, um, annual reporting or quarterly reporting with the agencies. And, um, you know, we're still, uh, learning processes and, and we're trying to always improve. And one item that Bowser had offered to us was the ability to submit a report to them for a review prior to an official reporting period date. So, um, for instance, our 2021 WBIF grant, it only is required to have the reporting done on, by February 1st of every year. So it's encompassing the whole year prior's, um, expenses. And Linda Denay, who worked at Bowser, has offered to kind of do, um, a pre-review. So, uh, I'm looking at taking the first six months of 2022 and basically gathering everything that we would normally submit as far as a report, having her look at it and giving any feedback. Um, and why this is important, one, it's, we're continuing our relationship with Bowser, um, always trying to adapt and improve. But also, there isn't any penalty if something were to not necessarily be correct or if they find something that we can improve upon. Um, so, and, and that's, that's kind of nice to be able to have that relationship with them and, and do that and just make sure we're all on the same page before anything is submitted that's official. And then if there is something that's not correct, then obviously that gets documented. So it's a nice offer, um, that they've, uh, extended to us and, and we are going to take them up on it. So that's in the month of August. I should be able to gather up, um, the first six months worth of, of invoices and, uh, send them over and then Linda and I will follow up with a meeting with each other afterwards. Two more items. Uh, one, um, our nine elements grant, uh, that we're working on with, uh, MPCA staff. We had identified in there a project, um, and it was a wetland restoration in the Cedar Lake Watershed. It's been a project we've been working on, um, for a number of years. And we've been in contact with the landowners. Um, this particular parcel, there is some development potential. And, um, we stayed in contact with them if all of a sudden something were to change. So a number of years ago when we made contact, they said they just weren't ready. And so we put it in this grant in hopes that as time had passed, maybe they would be ready. Long story short, they're still not ready. And so now we have to pivot and come up with a new strategy of where to use those funds that were identified in the grant towards, you know, one particular project or several projects and then a location. So with that grant, we only have three areas that we can, um, have expenditures on. It's the Pika Creek Watershed, Cedar Lake Watershed, and then, um, essentially what we know as Porter Creeks Watershed. So tomorrow, we're meeting with, um, WMO and SWCD staff to strategize and see what we can come up with. And then later on in the week, on Thursday, I have a meeting with our MPCA reps to kind of present to them what we're thinking and then also get their feedback. And then, um, hopefully be able to come on the same page with each other on, on what to do. Last item, um, this is the time of the year for, typically the time of the year for macro and verbit monitoring. Um, so the program's still very new. We have our results from last year. Um, we've developed a, um, webpage on the WMO site where we'll be posting them all, having basically in layman's terms, you know, what the results mean. Um, Vanessa's been kind enough to kind of walk me through. She has a lot more experience in the macro and verbit world. Um, so when the spreadsheet came over with, you know, 15 columns of just numbers, it looked off more into me. So that's why we're going to use kind of the, um, information off of those reports and be able to put something on our website that anybody would be able to understand. We're going to relay it in more of the, um, tolerant to less tolerant species, which is sort of the goal of the program is, um, figuring out if those change, uh, through time as we continue to do partnership projects or just, um, gather more data. And Met Council's been gracious enough, kind of helped us. Uh, they trained me in last year and they offered a invitation last week to go help them on a couple of their sites. Um, so we did that, uh, last Thursday. We went out to Eagle Creek and Credit River, um, sampled those. And so then I offered an invitation to them if they wanted to come with us next week and, um, they accepted. So they'll come out and help us on our Pika Creek, um, project. And we've also coordinated with the Soil and Water that, um, Shelby and their newest employee Chase are, um, going to be kind of running with the macro program now that John, uh, U-Tech has taken a position somewhere else. So we've got kind of this little community of folks that are learning how to do macro monitoring that, um, the Met Council staff has, you know, a little more experience than us and, um, will kind of lean on that, uh, early on here as we're sort of developing a program. So, um, with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Ryan on this presentation? If not, I think we're ready to move on then to Melissa's updates. Melissa, are you ready?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
Okay, great. Thanks. Uh, thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I will start with the McMahon Outlet, the McMahon Outlet project. On August 9th, myself and Megan Tosca, our Water Resources Engineer, met with WSB, who's doing the engineering and design of the outlet to go over the field survey data they collected. We talked about pros and cons, considerations for different route options. So Megan is talking to the Highway and Transportation Department about those different possible issues that we would have to deal with depending on which route was chosen. So WSB is working on the 30% design and the technical memo. We expect to receive something from them probably in the next couple of weeks. Once they submit that to Megan, Megan will forward that to our Transportation Department, have them look it over, give us some feedback. Then internally, staff will review what was presented. And then we'll start setting up a meeting with the agencies such as DNR, Army Corps of Engineers, and our other stakeholders to go over that information. Once we're all on the same page with that, then we will set up a landowner engagement meeting with the lake folks, including the township. That's probably going to happen sometime in September to present the 30% design. So at that time, at the 30% design, a primary route will be chosen and presented at that meeting. Looking at our project timeline, we're about a month behind, which isn't too bad. So we still expect to, as things move forward, have a final design by probably January then. Also, as part of the McMahon Outlet, I was tasked with collecting information from other Lids around the state. We're trying to help out the McMahon Lid with connecting with other Lids who do own outlets or pump stations, or maybe a large capital improvement project or BMP, collecting information from them on that, collecting whether they have insurance and how that works for them, and what are their projects or programs they manage. So I'm collecting that information, putting together a list that will be presented to the county board. And we're trying, and we're collecting that to try to help the lid and to understand that there are other Lids out there doing things like this. And also it gives them another source of people to tap into for questions and support. Moving on to the Aquatic Invasive Species Program, Prior Lake Spring Lake Watershed District, Shawna reached out to me last week. She worked with the U of M to put together a Starry Trek volunteer event or assessment. What that is, it's a event that the U of M hosts. It's to look for an invasive species called Starry Stonewort. It is, I believe it showed up in Minnesota around 2015. It's starting to spread to other counties. So the U of M developed this called Starry Trek event to help gather volunteers to go out on a weekend and look at other lakes, basically just around the public access areas, to see if they see anything that looks suspicious or doesn't look right. Fortunately, they had enough volunteers sign up in Scott County that they had more volunteers than they needed around the Prior Lake Spring Lake Watershed District area. So they asked if they could go to lakes in the WMO over Saturday and said, absolutely, that would be great. So I need to follow up with Shawna on how that went this past Saturday, but hopefully they didn't find anything that shouldn't be there. Our aquatic plant management program or lake surveys, if you remember, I had indicated to you that the McMahon Lake survey, we were, had to cut that short after about an hour, hour and a half because the motor plugged up. So I'm hoping to go back out sometime this week, possibly Wednesday, to give that a try again. Hopefully the algae have subsided some so that we can get that whole lake survey done. I've also submitted the Cedar Lake data from the July survey to the DNR. I'm waiting for them to create the survey maps. They like the maps done a certain way. Once they send those maps to me, I can get the survey report done and get that over to the lid, hopefully earlier than, than has been done in the past. It's been several months, but I had introduced to you a new study we're doing this year. It's called the Campbell Lake Regional Stormwater Assessment or Study. We're partnering with the city of Prior Lake. We met last week on August 17th, myself, Pete Young from the city, and HR Green, who was chosen to do this study. The city is leading it. They received a grant for it. The WMO is just supporting. But we had our kickoff meeting to start off that study. We went over the scope of work, what data we can provide them or that they need, and then some guidance on some of the scope tasks. The next meeting is in October and at that time, we will invite Spring Lake Township to attend that and Shocking Bed Lockton Sioux community. Right now, the timeline is that should be completed in December or early January. And again, the city's the lead and they're also leading the grant and all the managing of the grant. My last update has to do with the Nine Elements Grant. And there were some funds in there that for this year anyway, you know, we were going to look at some kind of CARP management for Cedar Lake. The lid had taken on the lead of doing another CARP study with WSB. So we were kind of waiting for that report to come out. I did reach out to them. It is complete, but they wanted to wait to share it to have their board talk about it together. So they're meeting in September for that. I did just let them know that, you know, we're working on the draft budget for 2023. We'll be finalizing that in October. So we would need to bring, you know, any kind of final draft budget stuff to this meeting in October. So if they could share that whenever they get done with their September meeting, that would be great so that we can look at that and decide if we need to use any of those report outcomes for 2023 budget stuff. So hopefully I'll be able to report more on that later this year. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Melissa? Well done, Melissa. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the One Watershed One Plan update. And maybe if Commissioner Weaver is available to chat a little bit, can you give us any kind of update from your perspective?
Yep, I'm here. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yep, okay, great. So we had our policy committee meeting last Thursday and we went over the, the public open house had taken place and that was alluded to earlier in the meeting here tonight. And then also the online meeting is all done. And, and the purpose of those meetings were to really to inform the public of the process and then also start looking for feedback on what the priorities would be. And the way the consultant had set it up is it almost was like a voting process. You'd say, pick two of your top priorities and then you could pick and then you could also add comments or do other. So they went over the feedback from that. And there's a report that they developed that they hadn't sent out at the time of the meeting, but they were going to send out. So that's something that I can get to Vanessa if she doesn't have it already. And I think we should send out to everybody on the Planning Commission. And then we also started to talk about what our priorities would be. So the policy committee works with the feedback of the advisory committee to actually come up with our priorities. So we need to pick locations, like if there are lakes or there are water bodies that we want to prioritize over the next 10 years for whatever our concerns are. So if it's water quality, or if it's groundwater, or if it's erosion, or it's, you know, that's, that's the feedback that they want to hear at these policy committee meetings. So I think it might be a good idea for us to talk about that at a meeting. And I don't know, I'll, I'll look to Vanessa maybe for some direction. I was thinking maybe at the next meeting in September, we could go over that document that the consultant sent out and then start talking about what, what we would want to prioritize so that when I go back and represent the county, and then I usually am standing in for Virgil to representing the Planning Commission, we can present our priority areas and then those can get included in with the plan. So it, it might just make sense to set time aside at the next meeting because the policy committee won't meet again until October. So if we wait until September to talk through this, that, that shouldn't slow anything down. And I think that's all that I have unless folks have questions.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Weaver. Is any, Commissioner, any of the commissioners have any questions or comments to Commissioner Weaver? Let's make a comment. I also attended the open house and did my little voting on priorities, et cetera. So it was well done. It wasn't as well attended as maybe I thought maybe it might have been. But, but it still was, it was very informative. So. Any other questions? Otherwise, we can move on to new business. We have to discuss the proposed levy request for 2023. So are you available, Vanessa, to address that?
I am, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This is the, one of the big presentations we all look forward to every year, right? I'm actually gonna do this a little bit out of order from the information that's in your packet, because I actually think giving you guys just a quick overview reminder of what our budget process actually is and what we are all required to follow. Probably will help inform you and help you make decisions as to how to provide input and just kind of, you know, what to expect, right, at the next few meetings that we go through for the rest of the year. So, and again, a lot of this kind of comes from the budget workshops that we are doing with the board here right now. And every accounting unit is doing it. It's not just natural resources or planning. It's, it's every, every accounting unit. So, so one of the things we put together is this kind of budget process information for the WMOs. This is just, all the WMOs are kind of required to follow these plans, reports, and regulations. These are specific to WMOs, Watershed Management Organizations. These are not actually met by any of the county, I'm getting an echo all of a sudden. The county PBB, Delivering What Matters. One second. Not you? Not you?
Is yours on? And, and that microphone picking it up?
Apologize, Commissioners. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you're good. You're clear.
Okay, it went away. I apologize for whatever that was. But the county also has priority-based budgeting. That's the PBB. They have Delivering What Matters and our KPI processes. That's how the county evaluates the work that we're doing and makes sure that we're following our strategic plan for the county as well and evaluates our progress for the county. So we, we all do, we do that as well as what I'm about to walk you through. So first and foremost, just again, the WMO's Watershed Management Plan under Minnesota Statute 103B. Dot 231, that detailed plan structure and content actually does include our funding and policies. We do update that every 10 years and it does take one to two years to complete that whole update process. That is adopted by the WMO Board and then that's approved by Bowser and reviewed by PCA, Met Council, DNR, and the other regulatory agencies. And they review that and provide us input prior to the final approval by Bowser. And we incorporate that input into the plan. There is a very, very intensive local government and public input process required for that. So as you're all familiar with for the most part. But that's also annually and biannually evaluated by the state through our annual reporting that we have to submit to Bowser. Then we also have the annual activity report. Again, that's part of that annual evaluation by the state. That's under 8410. That's under, it's under a rule actually and not a statute. That actually itemizes the detailed content requirements of our annual report. Ours is usually about 30 to 40 pages. I've seen them a little bit less and I've seen them a lot more. It just depends on how everybody writes theirs. It is due annually every year, 120 days after January 1st or the end of April, whichever way you want to look at it, or April. This is how we assess the effectiveness of the WMO and how we are, how well we are implementing our plan. We do annually present this to the board or WPC. We kind of alternate each year who we do the presentation to. And then that gets submitted to Bowser for approval each year. And then it is also posted on our website. We also actually have to complete an annual audit under 8410. That is due annually 180 days after January 1st and that again gets submitted to Bowser. We are a little tiny bit unique in that we are allowed to do our annual audit in conjunction with the county audit. So we submit ours late. Both us and Carver WMO are the two WMOs in the entire state that have a special exception. And every year, we send an email to Bowser requesting an extension and every year they say, okay. So, and then we just submit the annual audit when the county is done with it. We are also a special taxing district. Now, not every WMO is a special taxing district, but both the Vermillion and the, and the SWMO are. There are different ways to fund your agency, like with the stormwater utility or things like that. But we happen to be a special taxing district, just like schools or anything else. Special taxing districts have their own rules and requirements under MS 275. So for that, the proposed levy, which we are going to go through today, must be submitted on or before September 30th. And then after that levy is proposed, we must also hold a meeting to allow public input. It's not required to typically have a public hearing. That is one option you have, but you do have to have an option for the public to provide input after you propose the levy. So we've done open houses, community events. We've gone, we've done presentations, obviously, at the WPC. That's usually our most common. And every once in a while, we, we actually do a board public hearing. But those are all ways that we use to accomplish that requirement. And then our final levy must be certified five working days after December 20th. And then finally, there are grants. Grants have their own budget and reporting requirements depending upon the grant. I have this kind of little flow chart that I, I also made that sometimes helps everybody follow the timeline. So basically in July and August is where we start identifying those priority issues for the next year. So you'll remember when Troy was talking about the Schrep meeting, mid-year meeting to kind of talk about those priorities for Schrep. We need those priorities to fill out what our priority issues are for the next year. That's the reason why it's good to get a mid-year and not at the end of the year. In August, which is where we are now, we are drafting that proposed levy. But obviously you can't just draft a proposed levy without having some idea of what your budget outline might look like. So there is a budget outline that goes with it to help you inform the, the proposed levy decision. We then propose levy and budget outline, we bring the proposed levy and budget outline to the WPC for recommendation here in August. And then there's a new little step kind of in between where we have a board workshop. So I'll be adding that one actually. And then the proposed levy and budget outline are actually presented to the board for approval. We must actually do that at a board meeting. So that'll go in September, right after we do the board workshop. I'm working a little bit on that. The tricky part I have right now is that regardless of the input I get for the board workshop, I can't really change what I put in the board packet for September because the, the date for submitting that packet information is the same day I do the presentation. So hopefully, if there's a lot of comments from the board, I, I'll, I'm not sure what I'll do, but I'm sure we'll work it out. But I'm sure we'll figure it out. It's a, it's a great opportunity just to get in front of the board again. But I will go again in September and, and bring that to the board. After that, the proposed levy is certified by the WMO administrator, which is me, and I send that to Dana in taxation. And I do that before September 30th or right after it's approved by the board and set by the board. So again, that's the preliminary levy and just kind of an outline of the budget. We then start getting some of our final grant planning information from some of the state agencies. That's when we start getting our final budget and levy or drafting our public input process. or drafting our public input process are getting done in both October and November. So we get a lot done in October and November. We get a lot of data. A lot of those numbers start settling out in October and November, which we need because we need to then actually present the final levy and actually the full budget, the full draft proposed budget, to the board. But first, we have to go to the WPC. So we do that in October and/or November, depending upon when we get slotted to go to the board. And then the final levy and budget are presented to board for approval. The county has requested we do that actually now in November. They had, we had previously done it at a different time, but they do ask we do it now in November, or whenever they schedule us with our other little group. Sometimes I guess it could be technically December. But anyway, the final levy is then certified by the WMO Administrator and sent to Dana, again, in Taxation. The deadline is five working days after December 20th. And then that is the budget process for the WMO. So, once again, we are on step three of that. So, back to the beginning. This year, the Chair, Commissioners, this agenda item is to review the 2023 preliminary levy and draft budget outline for the Scott Watershed Management Organization Special Taxing District. And to consider preliminary levy recommendation to the board. To meet our existing goals, grant obligations, achieve our Watershed Management Plan, Implementation Plan, and maintain current service levels, we are proposing a levy of one million four hundred and two thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-six cents. Current budget draft outline is two million two hundred and sixty-six thousand four hundred and fifty. So there are some key factors influencing that 2023 budget. This year, overall revenue generally remains lower when we compare it with the past 10 years. That's probably going to be consistent until we get beyond the past 10 years, and then that's just going to be kind of consistently what the budget is. The 2023 revenue is actually expected to be similar to 2021. So you'll notice it's not similar to 2022. It's actually a little bit more similar to 2021. The proposed levy increase is 5.5%, which is the amount proposed in the approved 2019 to 2026 Watershed Management Plan. That plan identifies, like, a plan identifies a 3% inflation with a 2.5% cost increase. So it's a total of 5.5%. Oftentimes, we're able to make it with just asking for that 3%, but in order to stay on plan and complete our plan on time, we do need to get some large projects out. So we do need to get those going. The, so that is in line with the WMO and current county policy for levy increases. At this point in time, this can change, obviously, because we are a little bit ahead of the county itself. But based upon conversations that we have had with county administration, the proposed county levy increase currently being discussed is around 7%. Now, that is discussed. That is not necessarily what is brought to the board, but that is at least what is being discussed. And that's, so that's what I have to go off of at the moment. That can change, obviously, based upon what the county decides to do, and we would adjust accordingly. The proposed 2023 levy, again, is one million four hundred and two thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and change compared to the 2022 levy of one million three hundred and twenty-nine thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars and change. So it's an increase of seventy-three thousand one hundred and thirty. Tax impact. So the tax rate is actually a decrease of 4%. Our tax rate is actually going down from 1% down to about 0.0977%. The tax impact this year is a little bit unique, and I had a couple long meetings with the tax department, because there's been such a large increase in the market rate of houses and the valuation of homes. It has really affected tax rates and tax numbers. Many of you are aware of this. Many home prices or values have jumped dramatically. Well, it affects what your tax rates look like and things like that. But that's kind of what we are at. So now, if you're looking at, you know, other watersheds within the county comparatively, Prior Lake, Spring Lake Watershed District, their, like, 2022 levy was 1.8 million, and they, in 2022, their tax rate is 3.348%. Lower Minnesota River Watershed District, their levy for 2022 is 304,000. Obviously, there's a much smaller portion of Lower Min and Vermillion, but 304,000, their tax rate was 0.495%. And then Vermillion, they're looking at this year, thirty-five thousand one hundred dollars with a tax rate of 0.294. So obviously, we saw kind of right in the middle there of all of them, if you're looking at where we stand within the county and the other watershed agencies. The decrease in, oh, I apologize. So the draft budget, again, is 74%. We're up a little bit, again, from last year, because obviously, we're trying to get more CIPs in the ground. So we're at 74%. We always try to stay in the 70% range to get projects in the ground, and that's primarily land and water treatment. Again, the decrease in revenue does, again, that's just our new norm. In a couple years, I'll drop the word, reflect the new norm, because it'll be no longer new. In grant funding, so we have more stable grants, and that's great that our grants are more stable. But generally, overall, the grants, you know, are smaller and generally require a higher match upfront or more work upfront. You have to do more inventory and assessment and studies. You may have to do more preliminary design work upfront. And so, you know, that increases your contribution towards the grant and the more in kind you have towards that grant. Right now, grant information is pretty, is not very well known at this time. We know the grants that we currently have, you know, the Watershed-Based Implementation Funding Grant from 2021 and the Nine Elements Grant, but the rest of those are pretty out in the air right now. So we will have that information available, though, for the final budget review in October and November. If we are able to secure additional grant funds, which we obviously continue to try to work on, it would reduce the amount of fund balance needed for 2023, but it wouldn't eliminate it. And that's the key factor. Cost share demand remains high with the great work that our friends are doing down there at the SWCD. Staff continues to pursue a dedicated baseline fund for the Technical Assistance and Cost Share Program per direction from the Watershed Planning Commission. So the good news is 2023 recommendations are pretty close to current demand and baseline funding. So that's something we've been working towards for like the last about five years. And it looks like we're about there. So that's good. We've kind of achieved that goal. It is anticipated that the education outreach budget will be close to baseline again in 2023. So as you guys remember, we had to significantly reduce the education outreach budget the last few years, just to balance the budget. But it was a temporary reduction because obviously, those efforts to meet goal and plan and partnerships can't be achieved at such a cut. So we're looking at getting back to baseline again. So the program areas that are expected to be reduced for 2023 include administration and coordination. Regulation, planning, and maintenance will remain relatively flat. So you'll notice, most of our operations and day-to-day programming is actually either staying flat or going down. The vast majority of our budget is actually going towards land and water treatment and then monitoring. So there is an anticipated 309,000 increase to land and water treatment, and this is targeted projects, obviously, in order to design and install both the Xanadu Stream Beach, Stream Bank stabilization, and Pika Creek Riverine stabilization, as well as structural process projects and practices identified in the FY21 Watershed-Based Implementation Funding and Nine Elements Phase I Grants. So it is a high priority to complete these CIP projects, to stay on plan and complete the current Watershed Management Plan Implementation Plan before it expires in 2026. So obviously, we're getting down to the wire of getting these projects down and in the ground before our plan is done. So, there is also an anticipated $65,000 increase to monitoring in order to contribute towards increased data collection. And that's, that was also written into our plan to do now, in order to inform the next planning cycle. And that's standard for Watershed Management Plan, Planning. I can't keep saying, it's gotta be another word, other plan. Like, I feel like I say plan, plan, plan. Anyway, last one. It is, it is anticipated that there is going to be a maximum deficit of $624,000 in 2023. However, that deficit was planned, as it takes time to save funds sufficient to implement large CIPs. So as you folks hopefully recall, in the last couple of years, we have brought it to you that we have been trying to save money and put them aside to install these large CIPs at this point in time. And it takes us time to actually save up those funds and secure the grant funds when we can to match those. So we are on schedule, and we do have the restricted reserves available specifically to fulfill that deficit. And it's, and that, and so those funds are set aside. Our operational fund balance is actually about 600,000 as well right now. It's fluctuating. So we're at about that 35% that we would normally hope to have for our fund balance reserves for operations. So, that is the proposed preliminary levy and draft budget outline. Hopefully, folks are still awake and full of questions, or I just overwhelmed everybody. It's weird when I can't see everybody's face. But I do stand for any questions.
Vanessa, thank you very much. Very nice presentation. And I think I prefer to look at the decrease in the tax impact rather than the actual increase in the levy. If I'm, you know, glasses half-full versus half-empty. So, any questions, though, by the Commissioners for Vanessa on the proposed levy for 2023? As you're thinking about that, next would be in line for a motion for the WPC to make a recommendation for approval of the proposed levy to the WMO Board. So if there are no more questions or comments, we'd be open for that particular motion.
And Commissioners, I'm happy to go over any of the program areas if you want more detail, like if you want more detail on the tax projects that were the land and water treatment projects or the monitoring activities. I can certainly go through those in more detail if you're interested.
This is Commissioner Weaver, and I move to approve the levy as proposed for 2023.
There's been a motion to recommend to the WMO Board the approval of the proposed levy for 2023. Is there a second to that motion?
Commissioner Beerling, I'll second that.
Can we take a roll call vote, please?
Absolutely. Commissioner Pence?
Aye.
Commissioner Casilius?
Aye.
Commissioner Beerling?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
Commissioner Phil?
Aye.
Commissioner Shea?
I'm abstained.
And Commissioner Weaver?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much. Very nice job. The final item on the agenda before we adjourn will be the re-enrollment application, which is a little bit unique. So therefore, it comes to the board here to get approval. Ryan, you gonna give us a little information on that?
Eric, Commissioners, yes. I will, I'll walk everyone through this. So if you remember, last year is the first year where we started a re-enrollment program. As the program has kind of been around for over 10 years, we're starting to see some of these projects come back around. And in our plan, we identify that in certain situations, if there's a good benefit, a water quality benefit, that we can consider doing a re-enrollment for projects. And in other instances, it might not make sense to cost share and have somebody re-enroll. So there's a subcommittee that kind of meets between WMO and SWCD staff, and we vet those out. You know, if there's something that doesn't make sense and wouldn't fit kind of our goals, then we generally wouldn't bring that to the WPC. Now, this one, if you look at the fact sheet, does have pretty substantial benefits to it, and it's unique in a couple of different aspects. One, it's eight different filter strips that we are looking to re-enroll. One of the unique things about it is that they're not all on the same contract. And so the landowner is willing to re-enroll them all as one contract moving forward. So one, it would save on, you know, administration time, the contracts, all of that. And we save time by lumping them together, and we'll get into how that was calculated. But it, also, this rate is lower than what they would have been receiving for some of the contracts, and we'll get that breakdown, too. So the re-enrollment rate is only $100 per acre. So, so to kind of explain where they're located, you'll notice on the fact sheet, you've got two different locations. So the one on the map towards the top that actually flows to Pika Creek, and then the one on the southern end goes to St. Creek. So it's kind of another unique detail about this project. Here's referencing the sediment numbers. So generally speaking, we're trying to target $100 per ton of sediment, and this one's coming in at, you know, $12. So benefit numbers are really good on it. As we get into the cost estimate, it's where it gets a little unique. So you'll notice there was a total project cost estimate for the 10.5 acres that are eligible for re-enrollment, but there's a reduction here that's highlighted in red. And so Andy at the Son Water came up with this calculation on how he, how he came to that number. And so what it is, is because some of them are not expired already, here's a breakdown of three different contracts where they're not expired at this time. And so we can't, you know, pay a landowner, you know, doubling down on a payment. So Andy's kind of figured out what the cost per month of their existing contract was, and then figured out the remaining amount, and then that's what's reduced off of the contract. So it's a little confusing, but I can, I can try to answer any questions on that if anybody has any. So back up to the top on our memo. So the reason why it's here today is that through our cost share manual, we've got all re-enrollments that are identified as the applications go through the screening committee process. As Troy indicated in his report, the SWCD did review it last week at their meeting, and they recommended approval. So we're here today presenting it to the WPC as an action item to get a recommendation on it. I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Ryan on the proposed re-enrollment application for the Almankey Project? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the request.
Commissioner Schmidt, I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Weaver, I'll second.
Commissioner Weaver, seconds. Can we take a roll call vote, please?
Absolutely. Commissioner Pence?
Aye.
Commissioner Casilius?
Aye.
Commissioner Beerling?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
Commissioner Phil?
Aye.
Commissioner Shea?
Aye.
And Commissioner Weaver? And Commissioner Weaver?
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners.
If there is no other information or a request for information, et cetera, we could take a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Shay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
This is Commissioner Casilius. I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
I'll do.
Commissioner Pence?
Aye.
Commissioner Casilius?
Aye.
Commissioner Beerling?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
Commissioner Phil?
Aye.
Commissioner Shay?
Aye.
And Commissioner Weaver?
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners.
With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.